Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting hour. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all. We please start with a roll call.
Council President Alvinson. Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Member Rivera.
Here.
A roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
And move the excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Okay, got a move by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries. And we're gonna start tonight with a special presentation. Police Department Awards and Special Presentations. And to kick it off, it's Chief Schultz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Councilmember, Councilmembers, community members, and members of the Rent Police Family. It's my honor and privilege to stand before you tonight to recognize several of our officers whose actions quite literally saved lives. These awards represent moments of incredible courage, quick thinking, and compassion under pressure, qualities that define the very best for our profession. Every day, our officers put themselves in situations to help others who are in crisis, danger, or distress. They do so without hesitation, often under intense public scrutiny and challenge. Yet, time and time again, they continue to demonstrate the highest levels of valor and dedication to the people of this community. The incidents we're recognizing tonight are powerful reminders of what that commitment looks like in action. These officers stepped forward when every second mattered, embodying what it truly means to serve and protect our community. So, first up, if I could get Officer Eddie Ger and Officer Myers. On July 11th, 2025, officers were dispatched to a shooting at the Rent Transit Center. There were multiple reports of a subject injured, and the suspects had fled on a bus. Within two minutes, Officer Eddie Ger and Myers were on scene and located the victim hiding under a bus. Upon assessing the victim, they located several bullet wounds. They immediately applied chest seals and tourniquets to slow the bleeding until advanced lifesaving resources could arrive. The victim was transported to Harborview Medical Center in critical condition. After surgery, he was upgraded to stable condition. Medics later advised that if not for the immediate action taken by the officers, the victim would have succumbed to his injuries at the scene. For your exceptional lifesaving efforts and performance of duty, you are hereby conferred the Rent Police Department's Lifesaving Medal. Your efforts confirm your commitment to the safety of the Renton community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, if I could get Officer Cumming and Tamavina. On August 30th, several officers responded to the area of the Jean Coulomb Park, where a vehicle that had been associated with a vehicle prail was located, occupied by three people. Two of the occupants did not comply with officers' verbal commands to stop and started wading into the lake. They soon started swimming away from shore. Officers' concerns went from detaining the two to their welfare, appealing for them to return to shore. Officers observed that both seemed to be struggling to maintain their heads above water. Officer Cumming and Tamavina, recognizing the need to take immediate action, obtained access to jet skis that were moored at the Hyatt Dock. By the time, by this time, the male subject had gone under the water, and the female was fighting to keep herself above the surface. Grabbing an extra life vest, they reached the female, bringing her back to shore. They then picked up rescue divers from Rent Regional Fire Authority and brought them to the area they last observed the male. This action resulted in the male being recovered from the lake and transported to shore where lifesaving efforts could be attempted. Officer Cumming and Tamavina recognized the grave circumstances of this situation and took creative and decisive action, more certainly saving a life. For your exceptional and creative actions and the performance of duty, you are hereby awarded the Rent Police Department's Lifesaving Medal. Your actions exemplify your dedication to the safety and well-being of the Renton community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On August 31st, Officer Peterson responded to a stabbing that occurred in the 200 block of Williams Avenue South. Upon arrival, he found the victim had sustained a puncture wound to the neck. Officer Peterson quickly recognized that the priority was to administer immediate medical attention. Seeing that there had already been a significant amount of blood loss, Peterson continued to apply pressure to control the bleeding until Rent Regional Fire Authority arrived and could take over administering treatment. Medic One Chief of Operations commended Officer Peterson's actions, stating, "First responders will help many patients in their career, but very few times will they literally and directly save someone's life. Last night was one of those rare events. All the odds were stacked against this patient. Every link in the chain of his survival was critical to his outcome. I want to acknowledge the extraordinary work done by the first responding PD unit. Without that initial care, the victim would have been dead prior to EMS arrival." "Without Officer Peterson's immediate and purposeful actions, the victim would have surely succumbed to his wounds. In recognition of your extraordinary lifesaving actions and line of duty, you are hereby presented the Rent Police Department's Lifesaving Medal. Your courage and commitment reflect the highest standard of service to the Renton community." Congratulations. Sergeant Telemann. On October 3rd, officers were dispatched to a shooting in the 300 block of Burnett Avenue South. Sergeant Telemann and Officer Wynn were first to arrive on scene. They were directed to the victim, who had sustained a gunshot wound to the neck. While applying direct pressure to the wound, they checked the victim for other injuries. They located what appeared to be an exit wound in the victim's back. They appropriately addressed the secondary injury, continuing to care for the victim until emergency medical services arrived to render care. The victim was transported in critical condition to Harborview Medical Center, where they could utilize advanced medical treatment. Within days, the victim's status was upgraded and is expected to survive. Without the urgent intervention by Sergeant Telemann and Officer Wynn, the victim's prognosis would have been decidedly different. "In recognition of your outstanding lifesaving actions and line of duty, you are hereby presented with the Rent Police Department's Lifesaving Medal. Your courage and swift response reflect the unwavering commitment to protecting the lives and safety of the Renton community. Congratulations." Council President, Councilmembers, thank you again. It's an honor to present these lifesaving awards as a small token of gratitude to the officer's service and their extraordinary courage. I want to take a moment to express how truly humbling it is to serve alongside the remarkable men and women of the Rent Police Department. Their dedication to keeping our community safe and the incredible, often heroic, acts they perform every day are nothing short of extraordinary, as reflected in the incidents shared tonight. True policing goes beyond enforcing laws. It's about making a meaningful, positive difference in the lives of those we serve. I appreciate you allowing us to celebrate these amazing accomplishments, and as always, thank you for your continuing support.
We're gonna take a photo now?
Yeah.
Look at the man. I'm gonna bring one in. On the chips.
You guys wanna head out on the fourth floor?
Alright, we'll let the room get settled down here. See, all the friends and family are leaving, so. Alright, well, we're gonna keep moving on, and the next thing on our agenda is our administrative report.
Alright, good evening and goodbye, everybody. On Thursday, October 30th, at Renton Highlands Park and Neighborhood Center, city staff joined Renton School District officials, community leaders, and HCP One Health Board as they celebrated the success and continued growth of the Renton Student Health Hub. The hub is a collaborative initiative aimed at improving student access to behavioral health and housing services and now serves all 26 schools in the Renton School District. The celebration marked a significant milestone in the program's development, highlighting the power of cross-sector collaboration in addressing community needs. Future plans include exploring opportunities to build on this foundation and ensure every Renton student has access to the care and support needed to thrive. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwalt.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Alright, thank you. Next up is audience comments. We do have a few people signed up. I want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. Each person will have three minutes. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. There's a little yellow timer in front. When your time is almost up, please start wrapping up your comments. Our first speaker, I believe, is virtual. Hopefully Judith can hear me.
Can you hear me open?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and community members. My name is Morgan Crooker with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Following up on DFW's comments submitted during the Critical Areas Ordinance Comment Period on September 24th, because the first draft was released to us on September 15th, and the Planning Commission hearing occurred September 17th, DFW didn't have sufficient time to provide input at that hearing, and planning staff informed us there would be no additional comment opportunities. So, we'd like to take this opportunity to touch on some of those points, and reiterate that decisions made by the city play an important role in shaping the long-term health of Renton's waterways and, in turn, federally listed salmon populations. It's essential that proposed amendments to the Critical Areas Ordinance should be consistent with best available science, as current shrimp populations represent less than 10% of historic populations. Renton not only has an influential role in salmon protection and recovery, but the city also faces some water quality issues. Renton contains waterways that have been formally identified as impaired under the federal Clean Water Act. In other words, some waterways within Renton are currently not meeting water quality standards under current regulations and practices. This status should prompt the city to increase its stream protections during this update, rather than maintaining the same standard elements as current inputs. DFW's new best rule science demonstrates that a 100-foot buffer is the minimum necessary to effectively filter most pollutants before they reach streams. While the city's proposed amendments include buffer expansions for unvegetated scenarios, the standard widths currently proposed for type N streams remains insufficient to protect water quality functions, according to DFW's best rule science, even if fully vegetated, as they are below the sponsored footprint. This is particularly concerning because the smaller type N streams are often degraded and flow directly into fish-bearing waters such as Lake Washington, meaning inadequate buffers here directly contributes to pollution and habitat impacts downstream. We strongly urge you to incorporate DFW's best rule science, and at a very minimum, adopt the 100-foot buffer standard for all type N streams and all scenarios to ensure adequate pollution filtration and long-term ecological resilience. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Reggie.
Still no hot water. They came out, adjusted, took a shower. Every morning, the water is cold. Let it run for 15 minutes, it's still cold. But they're telling the officials that the water is hot. It's not hot. No hot from hot, cold from cold. So, I'm just asking, still coming to try to get it fixed and find out about, I feel that we need a professional person to come out from the city or state or whoever to check it, because maintenance don't know what they're doing. I didn't see the guy that came to adjust anything, but I was told that it was three items fixed, but one is still not fixed. So, maybe that item that's not fixed is with me. So, and there's no generator in that building for a backup. There's nothing. There's older people in there, and we need, we need a lot. It's a lot that needs to be done, instead of you making money on this, out there in the parking lot, towing cars and doing stuff that you shouldn't. She came over to make money. That's why everything is done where it's done. But for me, there's no hot water, and I do need some hot water. I just have to do it. I'll keep coming until we can do something. I thank you guys for listening.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Tyne Nguyen.
Well, good evening, all member council and Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm here. This is my number four time. I know everything I say right here is not your job beginning with, but because they not listen to us, so that's why I have to bring all here, so hopefully get fit. It's just like about the parking lot again. Last couple weeks, Heather and her husband out there walking around to scam one of my customers. She is about 72 years old, and she parked, and then she walked away from her car. They stopped her. They say, "You have permit to park here?" And they said, "No, I go get my nail done." Then she said, "Okay, you fine." And then when she get in, two minutes later, her, I mean, when she walk in, I asking her where she park. And then she say, "Oh, I park out there." I say, "Okay, if you walk, park out there, why do you move your car to my parking? Because I have two parking. One or three is my parking." Then she, she get herself out there, walk far away, and move her car over. And then when she sat down, I stopped doing her nail. Two minutes later, the tow truck there looking, driving around to fight, to try to looking for her car. And then I told her, "You look at that." She, once, one, right here, I mean, five minutes ago, she say, "You okay to park." Now, she the tow truck driving around, that mean they looking for your car to tow. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, one of the door that want to come in the building to deliver food for the elderly in there. And then they driving around, everywhere is parking permit only. They don't know where to park. They came in my salon and ask me. So, I let them use my parking. I say, "How come the building served all there, but have no visitor parking for their family member or for whatever they need?" Because otherwise, they will be tow away. When they make little money and pay up to $800 for parking, that make no sense. So, I know I would like to bring this to the office, but when I call, when I call Carmen, the one that had of the, on the top of Heather, and she say, "It not your business, because, because you are, you are have to call to the commercial one." I say, "But this belong to the building. Everything happened in the, with this building, so I have to call you guys and let you guys know. They don't accept my recommendation." But beside that, her husband came in all the time. I won't, I saw he, I saw he parked on the parking of the reserve parking with the parking permit only. And I asking myself, "How could he dare to have the parking permit, but not everybody else visitors?" And because I feel like she live above the law, or she run, she run the building, and then she allow to say, "Oh, you could park, you couldn't park." So, that made me don't feel right and don't feel fair for my customer when they come to get her service done and they couldn't park, and I'm stressed out every day. But her husband could come and pit phone, walking around, helping her tow people car, and no problem. Okay, well, thank you so much for listening, and I hope everything will solve soon. Otherwise, we so tired. We did, but I know you got tired too, but we need to make it thing get better. Thank you, and thank you, Carmen. You stopped by, made me feel like somebody going to do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. The guy who a parking, handicap parking, get tow in the handicap parking lot.
Okay.
And he keep asking me, "How can he get his money back?" And I say, "I thought it did to the city already, and I don't know how and when this will solve a problem for you."
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, once again, we appreciate the community coming to talk to us. We had somebody remotely talk about setbacks and testify on behalf of some of our setbacks. And then we had a resident come and talk about cold water in her building and parking issues. And I know that both of the, the water issues and the parking issue, that staff has been reaching out to the management at the reserve. I know that those issues are not completely addressed, but I know that our staff has been talking to the management over there. So, thank you for coming in and speaking with the council, so. Alright, next up is Consent Agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any that you'd like to pull for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
Here none. I move that the consent agenda be, that the council concur with consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Alright, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has two committee reports to present.
Alright, Finance Committee committee report. First is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments: a total payment of $7,803,650.92 for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and no wire transfers. Also, payroll, a total payment of $2,166,798.56 for payroll vouchers. That includes 711 direct deposits and four checks. This is the October 1st through 15th pay period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Alright, the next report is regarding the renewal of our stop-loss coverage for 2026. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2026 stop-loss, which is excess loss, insurance contract with Symetra, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign the implementing documents when ready. Symetra has offered a renewal, which included an increase to the individual deductible amount up to $300,000, saving $311,521 on the annual premium. This results in a total stop-loss premium of $1,267,282, just $4,278 more than the 2025 premium. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the finance, with the recommendation of the Finance Committee committee report.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we're on to Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Planning Development Committee has one committee report.
Alright, Planning and Development Committee, regarding the Critical Areas Ordinance Update. The Planning and Development Committee concurs in the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the Critical Areas Ordinance Updates, which is docket group 19B, docket D 235. In compliance with the Washington State Growth Management Act, the committee further recommends that the ordinance for this item be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. This is signed by the committee chair members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee committee report. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And, thank you. In lieu of some of the comments that were made, I want to post to the chair on how we were addressing some of those, because I know we just got the correspondence, and so I was just curious in terms of the 100-foot barrier. They're talking about streams and waterways. I know we're very in love with our salmon here, so I'm just curious.
I will back to staff and hope, but they've not drafted the ordinance yet, so I'm sure they'll be able to take the comment into account.
Thank you, sir. I was, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are on to Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Rivera?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, next up is legislation. We have one resolution for adoption and one ordinance for first reading.
Alright, the resolution is regarding setting a public hearing for a street vacation petition from the Renton Regional Fire Authority. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, setting a public hearing date, which will be December 1st, regarding vacation of the unopened right-of-way east of 158th Avenue Southeast and south of Northeast 128th Street, bisecting King County Parcel 366450008, in between parcel numbers 3664500330 and 366450007, also referred as the Renton Regional Fire Authority Street Vacation Petition, which is file VAC 25001.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the resolution be adopted as read. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the resolution be adopted as read. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Next is an ordinance for first reading. It's amending city code regarding co-living housing, which is docket item 239, and ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending chapter 42, sections 42060, 42080A6D, 42080A38, 42080A39, 42110C4, 42110F12, and 42110F6, chapter 44, sections 44080F10E, and 44155, and chapter 411, sections 41010, 41020, 41030, 41040, and 41200V, and 41200W of the Renton Municipal Code, amending zoning regulations, repealing outdated terms, adding co-living housing definitions and standards, authorizing corrections. co-living housing definitions and standards, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. Alright, we're on to new business. Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mayor. The Utilities Committee has a meeting on November 17, 2025, Monday at 3:15 PM. It's gonna be at the council conference room or via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. First is the first amendment to water supply contract, CHG-11-093, between the City of Renton and the City of Seattle, and two emerging issues in utilities.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November 17, at 6:00 PM, the committee will hold. Will be at the Conference Center. There is one item on the agenda, which is city law on guidelines. And at 7:00, we will have a rural council meeting, here in council chambers, and also via video conferences. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Prince?
No, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, November 17, at 5:00 PM in the council conference room and via video conference. There are four items on the agenda. First up, adaptive signal control at Maple Valley Highway, Sunset Boulevard, and Northeast Third. Second, change order number 52 to contact agreement 22163 with the Vetta Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Quarter Improvements Phase IV Project. Third, addendum 1225 to lease agreement 871 with Boeing Employees Flying Association Incorporated. And finally, emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting at 4:00 PM on Monday, November 17. There are four items on the agenda. The automatic license plate readers update, the RFA briefing, our update on Fifth and Sixth and Park, and emerging issues in public safety.
Alright, what is the wish of the council?
Will be adjourned.
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember McGurven, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Alright, we are adjourned.